Welcome to the September 30th meeting of the Franklin School Board. Meeting has been properly posted. Can we have a roll call, Mrs. Larson?
Yes. Mrs. Wukowski.
Here.
Mr. Alexandrovich.
Here.
Mr. Gamble.
Here.
Mr. Lewis.
Here.
Mr. Sprague.
Yep.
We are all present.
Thank you. Please join us for the Plaids of the Leagues.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Welcome, candidates. I'm Larry Gamble, school board member and president. Tonight, we also have the following board members with us: Mr. Mike Sprague, Mr. Claude Lewis, Board Treasurer, Alan Zantropic. Close, not quite.
Really.
Board Clerk Debbie Larson, Board Vice President Linda Wukowski, District Administrator Dr. Julie Miller, and from the district, we have helping us tonight Lisa Oshewski. Item four. I'll start with an overview of the format for tonight's board meeting. First, we'll ask each candidate for a brief introduction of yourselves and let us know how you prefer to be addressed by the board during the interview. After this brief introduction, we'd ask the candidates to retire to the lobby and wait until you're called for your turn to be interviewed. While you're giving your interview, each board member gets to ask questions. Each candidate will get asked the same questions, and each board member will be allowed follow-up questions. After the interview questions, the board will take a short 10-minute break, then the candidates will be asked to return to this room. The board will then have a discussion and take action. Following the discussion, there will be a possible initial motion to remove all four candidates and leave the board seat unfilled. If no motion is made, we will move to the next step of taking action, which is a board vote. All candidates will be under active consideration for at least the first round of voting. Board members may vote for an individual or abstain. If a candidate under consideration receives a majority of votes cast, they will be appointed to the seat. If no candidate under active consideration receives a majority of votes cast, the board president may entertain a motion to remove one or more candidates from active consideration. If no candidate under active consideration receives a majority of votes cast after five rounds, the seat will be deemed unfilled. Are there any questions from the board? At this time, I'm looking for a motion to adopt the vacancy appointment procedures.
So moved. Second.
Motion by Mrs. Larson, second by Ms. Wukowski. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. At this time, we'd like to move on to the introductions, starting with the person on the outside in the first row. Would you please state your name, provide a quick introduction, and how you prefer to be addressed?
I'm Kelly Savage. What else would you like me to share in the introduction beyond that?
We'll have you come up to the microphone when it's time to interview, and at that point, you can do a brief introduction about yourself.
Okay.
I'm Peter Thompson, um, student resident and active teacher and looking forward to being in the hot seat.
Next.
Patrick Murray, and everybody but my mom calls me Pat.
And then Jan Spurkey, and Jan is my thing.
Okay, thank you. At this time, we'll start the interviews in alphabetical order. So, Mr. Murray, would you remain for the interview? Take a seat at the table, and would everyone else go with Dr. Miller? Dr. Miller, be back. How you doing this evening?
Good.
You can start with a short opening statement if you like.
Sure. Once again, my name is Patrick Murray. Most people call me Pat. My first interaction with the Franklin School District was in 1956. I entered first grade at Ben Franklin School, which many of you may know, was located on 76th, just south of Tartsel. I'm proud to say that I went through the entire 12 years of my basic education here in Franklin. I'm also proud to say that I am the first and only Franklin High School graduate to serve as mayor of the city of Franklin, and also the first to be the alderman and council president of the city of Franklin. I spent many years in the environmental field, starting in solid waste, moving on to hazardous and toxic waste, ending up doing environmental cleanups, site assessments, doing everything from a small spill site to super pump sites. I then moved on to education, where I taught at the technical college level and also at the high school level, teaching automotive technology, digital electronics, and principles of engineering. Those two last courses were part of the Project Lead the Way. I'm proud to say that the organization I was with at that time was one of the first 20 schools that got certified in Project Lead the Way. Particularly proud of many of my students who went on to go on to higher education, many of them working for corporations you may now know as engineers or starting their own businesses, and also into education. It's really kind of fun to see a student of yours who is now a teacher, teaching the same thing, well, the same topic as you did. The interesting thing about the fields that I was teaching, I think are best summed up by Richard Riley, who was a former Secretary of Education, and he had a great quote that has always stuck with me. He says, "We're currently preparing students for jobs that don't exist, using technologies that haven't been invented, haven't yet been invented. In order to solve problems, we don't even know our problems yet." And I think that was always the most exciting part of my job in education, was that every year, contrary to what my students believe, I did not have the summers off, I had to go back to school, because all the technologies continually changed. And I always pointed out with my automotive students, "What happens every fall?" It's changed a little bit now, but they say, "Well, we go back to school." "Yeah." And the automakers bring out all new cars again, or new models of existing cars. Guess what? The technology has changed. And while I was heavily focused in that, I also very much supported math, science, and what I always called the software sciences of history and English. Because I would always point out to my students, "What is the most valuable tool in your toolbox?" And some would say torque wrenches, and some would say sockets and other types of wrenches, and I go, "No." Reach into my pocket, hold up a pen. I said, "This is what makes you the most money." And they look at me like, "What are you talking about?" And I said, "Well, let me give you an example." Couple comes in with their car, and it's just not working right. So, they explain what's wrong, or they think is wrong, and they disappear. And then they come back and pick up their car, and they're sitting at the cashier's window, and, you know, you get all the paperwork, and they look at it and go, "Wait a minute. The technician, all he wrote was, 'I fixed it.'" Think about that. "I fixed it." What does that mean? I says, "Even worse, he misspelled 'fixed.'" What's your level of confidence that the repair was properly made? Or was the repair made at all? Well, I always have one student, he said, "Well, he fixed it, he said so." "Okay." I said, "Now let's flip the page over." Now, the next technician writes, "I read the work order, found out what the complaint was. First thing I did is I verified the complaint, made sure I had a full understanding what that complaint was, and then I used our scan tool and scanned it, and every step of the way laid out what they did. The final statement was, 'I test drove the vehicle to make sure it was operating as it has designed.'" That's your level of confidence in that one? "Well, he really fixed it. He said so, and I didn't lay it all out." I said, "But here's the key." And because we were a General Motors program, I said, "General Motors will pay you for every step that you did. What do you think they're going to pay you for 'I fixed it'? They may not pay you anything, because, did you fix it? Maybe, maybe not, they said you did. So, the pen is your most valuable tool." I said, "But how do you get to that point? How'd you do in English last semester? Could you spell everything that you put in there? So, English, history, all of that is important, too. But my real slant has always been technology education, because that's where I came from. I have an undergraduate degree of business management, Bachelor of Science, and my major was administrative management, and my minor was labor and industrial relations. And my master's degree is Master of Educational Leadership. So, if I had chosen, I could have advanced to principal, associate principal, to director of curriculum, or even a superintendent. Not that I meant to..."
Today, it's all yours.
I did retire from education, and it wasn't quite time after that. So, I went to work for an industrial company, and they were a manufacturer of heavy equipment, both construction and agricultural. And I spent a number of years helping the dealer network find the parts and the proper repair procedures for the particular vehicle or unit that they had in their shops. And after substantial nudging from my wonderful bride, she had retired three years earlier, says, "It's time for you to come home. I have a list of chores for you to do." And that has brought me to today. I'd be happy to answer any questions or anything you'd like.
Thank you. I'll start with a questioning. An individual board member really has no authority. Only the board as a whole can make decisions for the district. What do you see as the job or role of a school board member, and what would be your priorities if selected to serve on the board?
I think the number-one priority, and kind of biased that way, is success of the students, and all students. I often got into long discussions with other colleagues that said, "Well, everybody should go to college." And I went, "Okay, but I think you're misusing the word, because to me, college is a two-year associate degree granting institution. Four-year degrees is a university." And if that's your definition, as it is mine, I totally agree. When I graduated from high school, if you had a high school diploma, you had to take it. There was plenty of industry in this area, you could go down the street and get hired. Today, technical skills require a lot more than what we can teach at the high school. They need advanced training. And one of my favorite stories is, an attorney needed some plumbing job, as we all end up having to do sometime. So, I called in a plumber, and the plumber went down in the basement, and he heard a few tinking of pipes and things, and came back upstairs. Plumber presented his beer, his bill, and the attorney looked at the bill and says, "Man, I can't even charge like that when I'm an attorney." And the plumber says, "Yeah, I couldn't do it either when I was an attorney." So, very good family sustaining job can be had with two years additional training, and it does not close the door. He's often had mothers with tears coming down their eyes, "I want my kid to go to college." And I said, "He's going to college." What she really meant was a university. And a student had told me, flat out, "I don't want to go to school at all. So, we've got to find a middle ground here. But I really like cars, and that, right up my alley, because that's what I'm training." I said, "But remember, that does not slam the door on your, in this case, your son's career. With a two-year associate degree, you can add on two more years, get a university degree. And he may find that he wants to go into the management side of his dealership, add two more years, business degree, he's now qualified to be an outstanding service manager, because he knows the technical side, he knows the people that will be reporting to him, but understands the business, and understands how this firm profit makes up really." Kind of a long-winded answer, but I think, as a board member, I could help make sure that all students have an opportunity to be successful. And with my input, hopefully, the board will also agree with that and continue on that mission of success.
Okay. And I have one more question.
Sure.
What are two or three strengths of our district which make you proud, and why do you see these as strengths?
The second part was...
Why do you see these as strengths?
I think Franklin has a long history of support for education. If I had joined, if I had gotten into first grade a couple of years earlier, I would have been going to the Wayland School, which now is located in Lance Ledge Park, a one-room, one through eight grade. The local farmers, and at that time Franklin was really strictly a farming community, said, "No, education is important, and we're going to step up and we're going to build a quality school." And when Ben Franklin was about to open, they came with their trucks and their trailers and loaded up all the equipment from Ben Franklin, Willow Edge, and I'm not sure which other schools there were, volunteered, brought all of the equipment and materials to the school, set it all up. And one of the local farmers near us, where we used to get milk and eggs, he was so proud of his education, he says, "Yeah, I graduated eighth grade, and no, none of my other friends ever did." Yet, education was so important to him and his brothers and his friends, that they stepped up, and not only with support, but with economic support, to build a quality school. My parents were involved in the development of schools. My mother sat on the high school committee to actually create Franklin High School, visited hundreds of, well, hundreds, I think is a little excessive, but many, many local high schools, to pick the best of all of those schools to incorporate into the high school. And I think it's that level of support that the community has always had. Yes, they grumble about taxes, but given the opportunity of having lower taxes and lower quality school, there's no choice for them. They go for the quality schools. And I think the staff has traditionally been very focused on developing and delivering the best education that they can. And I think that's something that you don't see in a lot of other communities. And I think that's what makes Franklin so positive in the quality schools we have and will continue to have.
Thank you. Mr. Alexandrovich.
Were you in favor of opening the schools as we did, or would you have preferred to go the virtual route, and why?
You know, that's an issue that I agonized over, and I don't have anyone in the school system any longer. I know the value of face-to-face instruction. You can do a lot over the Internet and a lot more than it's ever been, but you lose something in not having the face-to-face instruction. But there is a trade-off of making sure that it's as safe as possible of environment for the students. And I know of some parents that chose to stick with the virtual schooling because of their concern for their children, and that's fine. And I think it's appropriate, and I was really happy to see, that Franklin gave you the option of sending your child to in-person school or virtual. I am a very strong proponent of face-to-face, and maybe that's a bias from being an instructor, but I think the interaction of the class, as well as the interaction of the class to the instructor, is very, very valuable, and I don't think that can be successfully duplicated virtually. I think there's a lot of stuff that's being done now, certainly much better than it was this spring, when people were suddenly thrown into this cauldron, this issue, with little or no notice. I think there's been a lot of progress in that. Bottom line, I'm in favor of in-person instruction, but it has to be done safely. And if it can't be done safely, at least we have another option to keep our students progressing.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Good school boards have diverse memberships that help enrich and enhance the discussions of the board and therefore the community. Please tell us what in your background would be unique for our board?
I think a number of things. One, I understand the politics of it, and it's a shame that you even have to bring that word up when you talk about school boards, but we serve the community, and the whole community, not just the students, their parents, their grandparents. And as an elected official, I often heard people, especially older citizens, seniors, "Why do I have to keep paying school taxes? I don't have any kids in the school." Or, "Young people had started their families. I don't have any kids in the school, why should I pay?" And my explanation was very simple. I said, "Well," and this was addressing a senior couple, I said, "How long have you lived in Franklin? Oh, 20, 30 years." "Oh, great." "Any kids?" "Yeah, I've got three." "Okay, and did they all go through Franklin's schools?" "Oh, yeah, I've got a darn good education." "That's great, I appreciate it, because I think they should have gotten a good education." And I said, "Now, have you added up all the money you spent on school taxes while they were students?" "No." I said, "Well, do you know what it costs to educate a student for a year?" I said, "Well, let's pick a number. Let's pick $10,000. That's a nice round number. Do you think you spent, that you contributed $10,000 for each of your children, that's $30,000 for the three kids, for 12 years? Run that number together. Have you paid that much in tax?" "No." I said, "Well, think of it this way. You're still paying for your students' education. And so, there were other people in this community that were paying for your students, so you didn't have to pay the whole bill. They didn't have any kids in the school, but they knew to have a good citizen, really well-educated citizens, it was worth it to them. Isn't it worth it to you to continue that tradition?" And they go, "Oh, yeah, I never thought of it that way before." And I think that coupled with my background in education, I know what it's like on the front lines, to have a student come in and just totally out of sorts. I had one student, good student, almost sound asleep in my class, and he was in early class, the first hour, second hour, and walked over to him and said, "You know, this isn't like you. What's going on?" He said, "Well, I was up most of the night, because my mom went out with her girlfriends, and she was too intoxicated to drive home, so I had to go get her." You've got to understand the whole student, not the student that walked in through the door when the bell rang, what's going on in their lives. And I think I can bring that to the board, because I've had those students. And learning about what their backgrounds are, what's going on in their lives, and you don't find that out unless you build a rapport with your students. And I like to think that I had a very good rapport with my students. So, both from the political side and from the educational side, I think I can bring a lot to the board in both those areas.
Thank you.
As a board member, you will be asked to make decisions where you must put aside what is best for you, your family, or your personal acquaintances, and do what is best for not only our students, but our district as well. Please give an example of a time where you were asked to make such a decision, and how you went about making that decision.
Boy, that's almost the definition of holding public office. It's often the case, well, you know, you would like certain things happening in your neighborhood, but your neighbors may want something else. And as an elected official, your responsibility is to represent the people of your district or of the entire city. What's in the best interest of the community, what's in the best interest of your district, may not necessarily be in your best interest, or maybe that's a little strong of your desires, but you are there to represent them. Quite frankly, you won't hear from them unless something's happening that they don't like. You never get calls about... You never get calls about, "Oh, I think you guys are doing a wonderful job." It's, "Why didn't you do this?" Or, "Why didn't you do that?" I remember one young couple, I just built their house in a new subdivision, and they came to a public hearing for the property next to that subdivision. The developer wanted to develop that for a new subdivision. He said, "Well, you, you can't let that happen. That's supposed to be all natural area then." I said, "Who told you that?" "Well, the realtor said it's going to be a park." "Did you check with the city to see if it really was zoned for park, for park use?" "Well, no. She told me that." I said, "Got to understand. Usually, when a realtor's lips are moving, they're not telling you the truth. They're telling you what you want to hear to make the sale." So part of it is education, helping people understand how do you get the correct information, not, and luckily, when I served, there wasn't this thing called social media. And I am so grateful it isn't because of, and I'm not involved in social media simply because I've seen too much of what people just throw out there. Now, you know, what in the world, where did they come up with this stuff? And it spreads like wildfire. It used to be the most dangerous thing in the world was a stay-at-home mom with a telephone, where they could call all their friends. Now, anybody with a keyboard can help destroy the hard work of all of the boards and commissions and this school board as well. Is that?
Thank you.
Okay. How would you describe the changes in public schools from your own experience to those of your children, even grandchildren? What stands out for you as being most impactful to student success? And then also, how would, what can you imagine school might look like 10 years from now?
Well, let me start at the end and then we'll work on that. I think schools will be similar to what we have today, but different. And that sounds like a cop-out, but new technologies, new, new fields of endeavor. When I first was, worked in business, the most modern offices there were, we had IBM selector typewriters, a little ball, and that was the state-of-the-art. I was there when we started bringing computers in. Where I got turned down on a requisition, I asked for a color monitor, not just a green monitor. Well, that's an extravagance. No one's ever going to use colored monitors. Now, I, I don't even know if they make black and white monitors. The technology continues to change, and we have to be able to do that, encouraging our staff to continue with their education in their fields, but also understand what's happening in other fields. And it will be similar. I still see face-to-face education being still the standard, but a little bit different. When I enrolled my son in a school, they told me, "Oh, yeah, we're, we're state-of-the-art." And I went to the classroom, desks were still screwed down to the floor. That's the way it was in the fifties, not in the seventies and early eighties. That has to change. I see a lot more interaction working in groups, because that's the way things are, are done today. There's no such thing as you have an idea for something, you slip it underneath the door, and the engineer designs it all by himself or herself, and when it's done, it's spit out almost like out of a machine, and someone else built it or, or sold it or whatever. It doesn't happen anymore. You now have integrated teams, you have someone for marketing, you have someone for manufacturing, you have someone for design, maybe an outreach to a university for some more research. It can't be done all by yourself. I always used to advise my students that were doing design work in principles of engineering. I said, "If you design a park and you hand it down, or you give it to that old grizzled machinist down on the floor, and he looks at it, hands it back to you and says, 'Are you sure you want me to build it like this?'" Understand what he is very diplomatically saying. It can't be built this way. So we can't afford to have that kind of development anymore. It has to be ready to go. From the get-go, not build it, or design it, build it, now test it, change it all back, redesign it, rebuild it, test it. Don't have that time for turnaround. It's got to be right, and it's got to be right the first time. So I, can you talk about the first part of your question again?
Yes, the changes that you've seen from your own experiences versus your children or even grandchildren. What, what stands out for you as being most impactful to student success? What changes maybe in the classroom, in the district, that really impacts student success?
Well, I started seeing this even with my, with my son when he went to school. Very proud of this young man. He did very, very well from the very get-go, and I was very fortunate to have teachers that recognized that. And my description is, and let him go. Let him go as fast as he could go. If he wanted to do two years of work in one year, and he was progressing properly, they would let him go. And when I first started school, we all sat down, and there was tracking even back then, because we know who was in the top reading group, who was in the middle of the reading group, and who was in the lower reading group. But that was pretty regimented. You were either in one box or the other. I always got into a fair amount of trouble with some of my teachers, especially when we would read something, and one student would read a page, then the next student would read a page, the next student would read, and you just kind of read along. Well, I had another textbook, and I'm reading that and listening to when my turn was coming up, so I could follow it. If I would have been caught, that would have been a terrible thing. Instead of letting me go, as it turned out, they let my son go and go as fast as he could. We need to adapt to the students' learning abilities. They're much more visual. I am concerned that they don't have the social interactions that we had when we went to school, because they're so busy on a computer or on a cell phone. For fun, when all of this settles out, next time you go into a restaurant, see how many, how often people at the next table are actually looking at each other and conversing, or are they down on their, on their phone? I've had young people talk to each other on their phone, and they're sitting next to each other. "Yeah, I was texting him. Does your head move? Can you move your head to the left? Do that, and talk to them. Get that social interaction." And I think that's another advantage of the face-to-face interaction, because you can be working together and developing it, and I see a lot more of that, and I'm very happy to see that it's not so regimented anymore. Harder on the instructors, but I think they like it that way, too, because they can see much faster development in their students.
Thank you.
Does that address?
Yeah, I appreciate it.
Mr. Lookes?
Other than pandemic-related matters, what do you feel is the most important challenge facing the Franklin School Board in the next year, and why?
Sad to say, probably finances. Education continues, continues to cost more and more, and we have to do more and more with less and less. And I think we're getting very close to the point where there's no more fat on the bone. We're cutting into bone, and we're cutting into muscle. And when I have discussions with some of our state legislators, I talk to them all day, you know, you can't make yourself look good and hurt the students in your district. It just doesn't work. We have to have resources. That doesn't mean that we have to have locker rooms that rival the Big Ten, or the NFL, or the NBA, or anything like that. But it does mean that we have to have proper educational tools and equipment, materials. As we continue to work more and more in groups, that takes more resources. And they have to realize that. And I think if we can get some of the partisanship out of schools, instead of, "I'm going to get back at you because you're a, you're a red person, or you're a blue person," or whatever, fund the schools adequately, properly, and, you know, if a parent chooses to send their school, to child to a different alternative than the public school, don't penalize the public school, because you can't take just one unit out of a budget and make it work. Just because you took one kid out of a classroom doesn't mean you can reduce that classroom resources by one-thirty. It just doesn't work. We do have to have good financial controls, because I have never attended a teacher's meeting where they said, "If you only gave me more money, everything would be fine." Maybe, but I, I think with good budgeting, good operations, it can be done, but you still have to have a level of funding that makes it happen.
Thank you.
Did I answer your question?
Would any board member like to ask follow-up questions? Mr. Murray. Hearing none? Thank you for your time, sir.
Well, thank you for the opportunity.
Good evening. How are you doing this evening?
Good. This is the first time in an interview setting like this and wearing a mask.
The ultimate panel interview.
Would you put your mic just a little closer? Thank you very much.
You can start with a short opening statement, if you like.
Okay. Well, I am Kelly Savage. I live in Franklin. I have lived in Franklin for about fifteen years. I moved to Franklin, I mean, one of the reasons, I grew up in Illinois, and so did my husband, but living on the south side with the priorities so we could get close to family quickly, and Franklin had great school system, and we knew we were going to have kids, and so that was important to us. And so we have a fourteen-year-old and eleven-year-old boys. The eleven-year-old just started sixth grade in fourth part, and the fourteen-year-old just started high school. So interesting times for them to start these milestone opportunities. So I, I'm invested in this community. I'm invested in their communication, and so I'm, I'm proud to be here tonight. Other than that, I am a professional. I work at Northwestern Mutual. I currently am a communication and change lead for the Field Health Plan. And so I, I think, I'm here today, I think I have a lot to offer the board in the way of my experience throughout my career, over fifteen-plus years of public relations and internal communications, change management, I worked in government relations, community relations. I've really run the gamut as it relates to public relations and communications and change management, and I would have an interesting perspective, especially with all the, the communities going through now and in the future, and just all of the changes as we keep moving forward with technology and whatnot. So that, is that about me? And I am married. My husband is an entrepreneur. He has a small marketing agency downtown, and he started that in our basement about fifteen years ago, and I'm proud of that and proud of the work that he has done to build that. We've both been very active community members. We're very connected in the community to all sorts of groups and associations volunteering within, you know, Franklin, but also throughout Milwaukee and various areas. I currently sit on the United Way Women's Leadership Council and have volunteered at various aspects, I guess, with Franklin Sports and PTO groups, et cetera. And my husband has been involved with the Franklin Education Foundation, and we've also been involved with St., St. Albansus, not St. Albansus, St., St. Augustine Prep. It was, Albansus was in my mind downtown on the south side, as well as St. Joseph's Academy. So we've been involved from an education standpoint. I volunteered through Junior Achievement. I taught English as a second language. I taught college courses, and so I have experience, I guess, serving on nonprofit boards and volunteering in an educational role as well in the community. So that's a little bit about me.
Thank you. As an individual school board member, you have no authority, because only the board as a whole can make decisions for the district. What do you see as the job or role of a school board member? And what would be your priorities if selected to serve on the board?
Well, I see the school board member as the liaison to the administrators in the school system, as well as a liaison to, I think, local and state government officials. I think there's an advocacy component there. I think also there is a significant piece of relationship building, and I think that that is something I'm very strong at, is the relationship building aspect. With change management, you know, in working in that discipline, you have to really understand your stakeholders and your motivation, and build relationships and get to know them so that you can understand the gaps and how you can influence folks without authority. And so I, I think relationship building in particular is an important aspect for a school board member.
Thank you. What are two or three strengths of our district that make you proud? And what do you, why do you see these as strengths?
Well, I am so proud about a lot of things. I have to say that I am really thrilled with how things have gone with the pandemic. The, the communication that has come through from the, the school district has been amazing. I mean, almost to the point of over-communication. It's fabulous, a lot of repetition, and I think that it's been happening for quite some time. I think that it's, it's really eased anxiety of parents across the district and really given them a significant amount of detail to manage, you know, all of these uncertain times and changes that were happening. So kudos. I am super proud of that. I am, I'm also proud of, I guess, the, the thought process that I've been hearing about as I've talked to those of you on the board about thinking about our elementary schools and that, that we have so many people that want to get into the school district because it is a good school district, that we have a lot of kids in our classrooms, and we need to think about the future, and that you guys are taking steps to make sure that we're considering those things with purchasing land and looking at future opportunities and considering how we're going to, to go about that. I think that we have excellent I think that we have excellent administrators and teachers. I've had very positive interactions as my kids have gone through the school system. And I'm, I'm very proud of that. So I've been, I probably could give you many examples, but those are the top three that come to mind that I can really stand up for me.
Thank you. Ellen.
Were you? Sorry. Were you in favor of opening the schools as we did? Or would you have preferred to go virtual? And why?
I, I preferred that we go back to school. And the reason that I thought we should go back to school is that I thought we could do it safely. We're doing it in so many other environments. And that we could come up with a thoughtful process, which I think that we have done. But I also think that education is more than just academia. It is about the well-roundedness of a child. And so in this generation, you know, and I mentioned relationship building is a strong skill of mine. Like, that is, is how I am, I'm making my way in my career. And that is a networking and creating strong relationships helps get things done in the business world. And I think that it's something that kids need to learn. They need to have that face-to-face interaction. They need to learn how to build relationships with their peers. They need to work directly with their teachers and learn how to build those relationships and take constructive criticism to their, their face and how to manage that. I think there are so many important pieces of that that, um, that you need to have the, you know, the in-person option. And so, so I was certainly favored that route.
Thank you.
Good school boards have diverse memberships that help enrich and enhance the discussions of the board and therefore the community. Please tell us what in your background would be unique for our board?
What is my background? I, uh, I think, uh, I don't know. When you said diversity, it made me immediately think that, I, you know, I studied abroad as a student. I did bring a foreign exchange student into my home from Thailand that attended Franklin High School last year. So I am definitely, I guess, open to new ideas and new experiences. And so I think that that, I guess, in and of itself, I have a diverse perspective to add. I think, based on the experiences that I shared with you, I think that those are, are different angles. I think when you're looking at a board, I've sat on various nonprofit boards throughout my career and looking at all of the different pieces of the individuals and what they, what they bring to the table as you're looking at the vision and strategy of, of the organization or of the school system in this case. And I think that my, my experiences with change management and building strategies and enacting and implementing strategy would be a powerful piece as you all are setting the vision for the next several years for the school board and figuring out how to implement it. And I think that I could play a role there with the diverse experiences that I've had in that discipline. I think, uh, the government relations experience that I have in working closely with state councils and lobbyists to figure out how we can move forward legislation and advocate and hold in different parties to advocate. I think that, uh, the role of the board member to advocate on behalf of the school system here in Franklin and my experience in that realm of kind of translating difficult legislation into layman's terms would be an interesting angle that I would bring in with a diverse perspective, I think, from, from that realm. I also have a lot of community relations experience in which I've worked with different schools as well as CISA and other nonprofit educational associations. And so I, I think that that, that also brings it, you know, an angle and a perspective that could be unique to the board.
Thank you.
As a board member, you'll be asked to make decisions where you must put aside what is best for you, your family or your personal acquaintances, and do what's best for not only our students but our school district as well. Please give an example of a time where you were asked to make such a decision and how you went about making that decision.
To support a decision or to, to make a decision that was not in the best interest of my family?
Or yourself or friends?
That's a difficult one to... Can you ask the question one more time so I can just think about this?
Do you want me to give you an example, like what I'm kind of thinking about?
Yeah.
So when I first came to the board, um, we were trying to redistrict. And so let's say, for example, your children would have to be redistricted to another elementary school and your neighbors were on top of you. Don't let our kids get redistricted. Like, how do you make that decision when you know it's not going to be of benefit to you? It's going to not be of benefit to your children, so to speak. How are you going to make that decision? And are you able to make a decision like that?
I, I am able to make that decision. I think that, I mean, with any decision, you have to start with research and looking and analyzing that, the information that you have in front of you to make the best decision. And when you have the data at hand, you are able to make a decision and stand, stand behind that decision regardless of, you know, how you may feel about it. I'm trying to think of a specific situation. I, I don't know if I could have one where it's personally impacted my family, but there have been work decisions in the past that I have not agreed with, but I have had to advocate on behalf of the organization and sit, stand in a leadership position to push that initiative or effort forward when perhaps it was not necessarily in line with my personal thoughts or views. But, um, the, we had the, you know, the facts in, in line. There was nothing, you know, unethical or, I guess, against the facts that would cause me to go, you know, to fight that decision. And so I, I, I mean, I think that that is the best route to go is when you can, you know, utilize the research and the data to back it. You can't really argue with that scenario. You have to, you know, put others in first.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm next. How would you describe the changes in public schools from your own experience to those of your children? What stands out for you as being most impactful to student success?
Well, I think technology is most impactful in positive and negative ways. I think from the time that I was in the, the school system, I think it's created exciting opportunities to allow us to work and perform school virtually now. But I think at the same time, it's opening up doors for bullying and, and other issues that have to be addressed. So, I mean, that is the, the biggest thing that stands out, I guess, for me because I think that it's important that academia connect to the work business world. And so technology and the changing technology is something that I believe is impactful and important for schools to stay on top of so that we can prepare the next generation to succeed the way we need them to. So I, I guess that's my, you know, the biggest thing that comes to mind.
Can you imagine what school might look like 10 years from now? Or 20 years from now?
I definitely am starting to think about that now as I see how quickly we move to a virtual environment. Um, you know, I wonder, it, it would be nice, and maybe nice is not the right word, but I think that it would be interesting to see if we could create more independence in student learning, you know, as things evolve. I mean, I think this virtual situation is kind of driving that to a certain extent. And can we push children to be even more critical thinkers than they are today? And more curious? I think that could be a really positive and exciting opportunity. If we could think, you know, virtual school has, has not necessarily been one that I've been super excited about. Obviously, I shared my position that I really wanted them to be in school. But I think at the same time, I really want to raise independent, self-sufficient children. And I think that while it's difficult to transition to that type of environment, I wonder if we could evolve things further to push them in a school setting to kind of develop those facets a little bit deeper.
Thank you.
All right. Other than COVID-related matters, what do you feel is the most important challenge facing the Franklin School Board in the next year and why?
In the next year? Well, I, I have to say, I don't think that we hear enough about some of the things that are happening in the school board to know what some of the top issues are. I think that, you know, as a school board member, I see a lot of opportunity to kind of raise the level of, of viewing, I guess, and, um, notice by the community of some of the great work that's happening. If I wouldn't have inquired, I wouldn't have known about the, the land that was being purchased and some of the things that board is considering. And so I think that there are just a, a lot of great opportunities to make sure that Franklin community is more involved. I think that there are some great opportunities to have more parents buying for seats like this on, on the board, to have that commitment to the education system in their community. I think that there's a lot of opportunity to make sure. And what I'm, I guess I'm excited about is that the succession planning to make sure that we continue to bring in fantastic administrators and leaders into our school system is another, another thing. But I mean, as far as like the biggest challenge in the next year, it's really hard to look past COVID right now. I think that's the, the top thing on everyone's mind. But I, I guess, I'm also a very optimistic person in looking more towards the, the glass half-full versus the glass half-full.
Thank you.
Did any other board members have a follow-up question?
I do. You, you have talked extensively about your professional life, your work. Your husband has his own business and all of the, um, the volunteer work that you do. How will you have time for us on the board?
Yeah. Yeah, I, I have, of course, that's, you know, a great thought. I mean, I, I work at home now, which is fabulous and will be for quite some time. And that has been freeing up a lot of capacity for me to not have the commute, to have that aspect. I think that currently I'm only sitting on the Women's Leadership Council for the United Way. And if I were appointed, I, I believe I, I have been sitting on the United Way's Women's Leadership Council for quite some time, I think six-plus years, had a couple of terms. So I think that might be something, honestly, that I would consider rolling off so that I could dedicate more time to this opportunity. I think that, you know, it's, it's, it would probably be a great opportunity for a new female to roll onto that, that board anyway. It has been something I've been thinking about already. So I, I do definitely have the time for this. And I'm kind of making adjustments in my life. And if the work scenario from a virtual standpoint is helping.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Hearing none? Thank you for your time. Welcome back. You can start with a short opening statement if you like.
Sure, thanks. So hi, I am Anne Zepersky. I think I know all of you from being here for a while, observing meetings, participating in meetings. A little bit about me, um, we've lived here since 2007. And I have three children who are in high school and middle school, junior, freshman, sixth grade. My husband, um, is an educator and administrator in a neighboring district. I have, like I said, I've been coming to your school board meetings for just over three years. I originally came with a concern. The concern was addressed and taken care of. And I, in the process of, you know, coming to the meetings and talking with that, I just became fascinated with the school board. And what I thought I knew so well about Franklin Public Schools from being real involved at the elementary school level grew as I realized there was so much more to Franklin Public Schools, the school board. And I just learned so much. And I, as you know, have never stopped coming. And I am just really interested in, you know, really interested in the board and how it serves the community as a whole. I'm interested in being on the board as, you know, sitting on the board in service to the community. And, um, I, uh, you know, I'm just, I'm, I'm a communicator. I'm a facilitator. I'm a, I'm a leader. I've had a couple of different, um, leadership roles in the district, represented the district at a district level. I'm a parent for advocates for gr- uh, gifted education as a whole district. And the United Music Parents at the high school level for our music parent group. And, um, previously a long time ago as a elementary school PTO president. So I've worked in the district with a lot of different people, a lot of different levels. And I just would really like to share some of those talents of the board as a whole.
Okay, thank you. An individual school board member has no authority. Only the board as a whole can make decisions for the district. What do you see as the job or the role of a school board member? And what would be your priorities if selected to serve on the board?
Well, the role of the member is to work together as, um, you know, with the other members of the school board to come to consensus and create, um, policy and be, be leaders for the district. My, my role would be to work together with all of you in addressing those issues and focusing on the, the mission and the vision, the strategic goals, appearance plan of the district, making sure that the district as a whole is following through on all of those plans. And representing the needs of our constituents, listening to their concerns, but making decisions as, as a group.
What are two or three strengths of our district that make you proud? And why do you see these as strengths?
Only two or three? I think Franklin Public Schools as a whole, the district is, um, is an incredible place. And I am proud that my children are here, um, at, you know, as students. And I'm proud to live in Franklin. And I tell people all the time, they should come and live in Franklin so their kids can go to school here too. I think, um, strengths, we have incredibly high achievement. I think our kids are offered with amazing educational opportunities. And because of those, um, opportunities, you know, incredible teachers, they are very high achievers. And, uh, I think that all of the different activities and extracurricular things that the district offers for our students allows them to become better citizens as a whole. Not just, I can take this test and get this great score, but I know how to interact with other people. I know how to care about other people. I know how to, to be a good, a good citizen in the world, not just take a test and do really well.
Thank you.
Were you in favor of opening the schools as we did? Or would you have preferred to go virtual? And why?
Well, I think you all know the answer to that question. I was very strongly against opening the schools. I, um, as a nurse, I was concerned medically in terms of the health of our students and the safety. I, I had great concerns. And I, I spoke to all of you, I think, about my concerns. That being said, the district had, uh, you know, did a good job of offering, you know, different options. And ultimately, my children have come back to school and they are in person. And although it makes me nervous, I don't, you know, I don't, I don't love it. I am glad that they are back in school. They are glad that they are back in school. And we can't control everything about the environment. We can't control... We just, none of us can control it. But I think the district is doing everything that they can to try to mitigate that risk for our students. And they are... Like I said, I, I am glad that my kids are in school. So I, although I was against it, I didn't, I didn't think it was a great idea. I am glad that the kids are back in school.
Thank you.
Good school boards have, excuse me. Good school boards have diverse memberships that help enrich and enhance the discussion. Good school boards have diverse memberships that help enrich and enhance the discussions of the board and therefore the community. Please tell us what in your background would be unique for our board?
Okay. I have, where to begin? I, what I can bring to the board in terms of a different perspective, I am, I'm a nurse, so I have a medical background for the last 23 years, working for the last almost 16 in a very high, intense, I work in the neonatal intensive care unit, so I work with families in crisis. So I have a real strength in talking with people and hearing their concerns, helping understand where they are and what they need to get to that next level. How can, how can we take someone in crisis and bring them out of crisis? I'm one of six kids, so I have a unique perspective, and then I get along with a lot of people in a lot of different ways, take a lot of, a lot of heat in that, growing up that, in that way. I am, as I stated previously, I'm married to an educator, so I have seen education from the point of view of a teacher, as well as now as a parent. My husband is now an administrator, so I have that administrative perspective, a different lens to look through. So I think in a lot of different ways, I have a very different, kind of, unique lens to look at school issues and problems.
Thank you.
I'm coming. As a board member, you will be asked to make decisions where you must put aside what is best for you, your family, or your personal acquaintances, and do what is best not only for our students but for our district. Please give an example of a time where you were asked to make such a decision and how you went about making that decision.
Well, I mean, most recently, that, I had to put aside my beliefs about sending the kids back to school and focus on what they needed educationally, and obviously I did that. Also, very often in my, in my work, we have to kind of take a different view. I've got, you know, a parent who wants to do something with their baby, and it's not in the best interest of the baby, and I have to explain to parents why, you know, I know you want to hold, but that's just not the best interest of your baby at this time. I am, I'm not afraid to say no to someone because I know what's best for the, you know, for the greater good in terms of, like in my work, for the baby or, you know, in a different life situation.
Thank you.
How would you describe the changes in public schools from your own experience to those of your children? And what stands out for you as being most impactful to student success?
Most impactful to student success? Well, my experience compared to my children's is different. I was a Catholic school kid, so I was not in a public school environment, and I grew up in the Chicago area, so my, you know, I took the city bus to school and the train and things like that. So my kids have a very different experience than I do. I love the experience that my kids are getting, and I'm very proud of that. I'm sorry, can you repeat the end of your question, Ms. Wapelski?
What stands out for you as being most impactful to student success?
Most impactful to student success? I think the kids, our students, are most successful when they have incredible teachers and leaders who are making, leaders who can make decisions about their, the education curriculum, things like that, and the teachers who can really meet them and bring out, draw out their strengths, depending on, you know, whatever that individual child needs. And that's what I see happening in Franklin. I'm really proud of that, that our teachers can find each individual student and say, oh, you know what, you're all fourth graders, but I can see you can do this and you can do that, and I'm going to bring that out in each one of you. And I think that helps each child feel important and valued and feels, you know, like I can, I can do this, and that takes them to that next step.
Just a follow-up, what can you imagine school might look like 10 years from now or even 20 years from now?
Wow, well, I think we learned a lot during the pandemic here with what technology can do. So that, I'm sure, technology will influence what our schools, what our schools look like in terms of how kids are learning and maybe even distance learning and maybe getting specialists from, you know, other places who can zoom into classrooms and teach and things like that. So I would imagine technology will significantly change school in the future.
Thank you.
Other than COVID-related matters, what do you feel is the most important challenge facing the Franklin School Board in the next year?
Facing the Franklin School Board in the next year? Well, I think always a major issue is going to be funding. I think especially now with, because of COVID, we don't know what numbers are going to look like, student numbers, we haven't had our enrollment update yet at a board meeting, so I don't know exactly what our numbers are this year, but that will impact our funding. And then funding kind of trickles down to everything else, right? I mean, in order for kids to be successful, they have to feel safe. So whether it's COVID or whether it's the facilities they're in or things like that, safety is always going to, you know, come first. Funding can impact that. From, from safety comes that ability to achieve, that, you know, if a kid feels safe, both mentally, physically, emotionally safe at school, they're going to achieve better, higher. And so the funding piece of how, how do we keep everybody safe, COVID or not? And then how does that trickle down into having the best leadership teams and then attracting and retaining excellent staff to help kids reach that achievement?
Thank you. Did any board member have a follow-up question? No, thank you very much.
I got my turn.
Welcome back.
Thank you.
You can start with a short opening statement if you like.
My name is Pete Thompson. I have actually lived in Franklin over four years, but I've lived in this area all my life. I love the city area. I actually just recently retired as the instrumental music teacher in South Milwaukee. My life has surrounded my school schedule for over 50 years. So when this year started and my wife went off the page, I was lost a little bit, and I had said over the summer, you know, maybe at some point I could look into something like the school board. I said, at least, you know, I can stay involved in education, I can help out. And she's like, yes, but how do you go about that? And I said, well, it isn't so much how do I go about that, it's like, my feeling running for the school board is, you usually want to take somebody out because you feel like you're not doing what's best. I couldn't say that. So it's like, why would you run if you don't want to take somebody off the board? So that didn't happen. And then all of a sudden, she was reading through the paper, and she found the advertisement. I'm like, you're joking, right? And she tore it up, and she gave it to me, and she goes, now you know what to do. So that was why I decided to come this direction. I love education, I love students. I just thought it'd be a great way to stay involved.
Thank you. An individual school board member really has no authority. Only the board as a whole can make decisions for the district. What do you see as the job or the role of a school board member? And what would be your priorities if selected to serve?
I like how you said it's the whole that makes the decision in the end. And I've seen that from the standpoint of being in school board meetings as a visitor or as a teacher. Everybody has opinions on something. And so when you have seven people up there, you have to listen to all seven opinions, including your own. And there's times you have to sit there and go, okay, I agree with that more than I agree with my own. So it really comes down to seven people finding the middle ground that works, and whether they want to go with something or not go with something. So it really is listening as well as communicating your own thoughts.
What are two or three strengths of our district that make you proud? And why do you see these as strengths?
Well, obviously, I'm a music teacher, so I've known some of the music people out here for a long time. And I know there was something some years ago where I actually came out here and talked with one of the principals because they wanted my input on something that was occurring in the music program at that time. And so we talked for a long time, and there were some changes that were made that seemed to help, and it's really blossomed a lot. I also like the fact that there is a good connection between the academics and, like, the athletics or the co-curriculars. I think that's important. You need both ends. Our students need both ends of that. They need to know that it's important to be in the classroom, they need to know that it's important to get things done, they need to know that they need to have some direction. But they also need outlets that may be football, basketball, testing, whatever it may be, that they have those outlets as well. And I really like the fact that the district mixes those together very, very well.
Thank you. Were you in favor of opening the schools as we did? Or would you have preferred to go virtual, and why?
That's a tough question. When it first was happening, and I will tell you right now, I'm glad this occurred after that and not before that because it's not a decision I would have wanted to make. It seems to have been working for you at the time, I wouldn't have been necessarily for it, but I would have listened to reasons for it because I think there were some good reasons that came out to bring students back. I think some of them needed to get out of the house, I think they needed to get back in school, I think they needed face-to-face instruction. Finishing my career last year as someone who had to teach online, that's not easy. You're overplanning for everything, and you're not even sure if students are all mentally there. When you have them in a classroom, you can see what's going on, you know you're reaching them. As long as it's done well, I think it could work. So to answer that question is, would I have been for it when I walked in the room? Probably not. Would I have listened to the reasons why? Absolutely. Because I think there were some really good reasons that came out. And I have talked to some parents in my neighborhood who have their students back in their life, it's working really well. So they're very happy with what's happening. I also have a wife who teaches in another district, and she is not thrilled with how it's working for her because they're doing kind of a hybrid situation. So she's not reaching out to her students at the same time in the same way. So she's frustrated on that. So I guess that my answer is that I would have walked into the room that day not sure if I would have said yes, but probably would have understood by the time it was over.
Okay, thank you.
Good school boards have diverse memberships that help enrich and enhance the discussions of the board and therefore the community. Please tell us what in your background would be unique for our board?
I come from an education background, obviously. So I have understood from the bottom, you might say, of how education works. There has been many times I have sat and gone, why did the board make that decision? And then you talk to somebody. I've had board members who stopped by my room at times, and they would explain how they felt, and they understood. I had a board member one time who actually walked in after a vote because he was the only person that voted no at something that involved me. He wanted to tell me that he voted no, not because he was voting no to what was happening, he was voting no because he felt that the school district should have just listened to what I had to say at first. So he actually came and talked to me, and I think that connection is really wonderful. I think I bring a big mixed bag. I've been in education for a long time. I have a daughter in another district with her mother who's going to be graduating this year. And I also have a four-year-old who will be going to the Franklin School in a short time. So yeah, I'm a real mixed bag there. And yes, sometimes they do act the same. I think I can bring all of those things together. In the year, the 50 years I've been involved in education as a student and as a teacher and as a parent, there's been so many changes. We all know from the time we were students to now, there's been so many changes in education. So I think sometimes we have to stand back and go, why are we making this change? And is it the best thing for our students? And we have to hold that discussion and then decide whether that's absolutely right. It's up to this person's part to come to us with those ideas, it's up to us to ask the question of why. And I think that why, for me, comes from very, very background.
As a board member, you will be asked to make a decision where you must put aside what is best for you, your family, or your personal acquaintances, and do what is best not only for our students but for our district as well. Please give an example of a time where you were asked to make such a decision, and how did you go about making that decision?
Well, I think that's, for me, it's, you could almost say it from a musical standpoint, where when I first started in South Milwaukee, there were some things that I felt were old, and I wanted to make the change. But it was kind of brought to my attention, there are some traditions you cannot walk in and change. There are students that are having expectations that things will go a certain way. And as uncomfortable as it was for me to teach in that style or direct my kids in that way, I did it. And I did it for a number of years. Did I eventually make the change? Yes, but it took 10 years to do it. So that really is, is one of the things I think about, is that I had to put me on the side and say, okay, I'm a teacher, I can adapt, these are students. It's just like being a parent. You're the parent, if the child's having a problem and says, I hate you, you let slide off. You're the adult. So I was the adult, I had to make the change.
Thank you.
How would you describe the changes in public schools from your own experience to those of your children? What stands out for you as being most impactful to student success?
Well, the biggest change I think I've seen, obviously, is from the time I was a student to the time Laurel, who's my oldest, was starting school to her finishing, it's become much more independent in many ways. They are asked to kind of find their niche and how they want to seek it out. I'm not sure that's going to stay or whether that's going to go, but for her at a certain level, especially middle school, that was, that was wonderful for her because she was a bit ahead of the curve at that point, and she needed something to go to that was a bit different. So the independent learning in a way has really been helpful. I also have, I'm trying to think of the word I'm trying to use, I may have to skip the answer here. So why don't we move on at that point? Because I just, if I think of the word, I will come back to it.
What can you imagine school might look like 10 years from now or even 20 years from now?
That's a really good question. I think, and this is something I tell my wife, my wife is younger than I am, she has been in education a lot less than I have, and I tell her, you must realize that things are cyclical, that some of the things that I was involved with will come back again. So I see some structure to classes that will actually come back again because I think we love the idea of the independence and the students seeking out their own knowledge. But I think for some students, that's not working, they need a little bit of more structure. So I think we all are seeing that, and we have to figure out how to put that in again. I also see the fact that our, as you look around the room with the computers open, our electronics will play a bigger role. But we will find a way to do it in a better manner than we are right now. We're trying, we're trying experiments with all kinds of things. Our devices are going to get smaller and smaller and smaller, and our books are going to be in our hand because it'll be a lot cheaper to do. But we have to make sure we control that, and that's the hard part right now with all the devices we have out there is we need to figure out how to control it. So I see electronics playing a big, big role in education. So I see electronics playing a big, big role in education and how we deliver it. We will have classes that will be virtual in some ways because it may be that Franklin High School does not have a teacher who teaches one thing, but there is another district that does. And all of a sudden, you can find a way to do it. And when I was in Adams Friendship for one year, I taught, and they actually had a room for that where students went in because there was a teacher in another district that could teach one class. So I see more of that happening so that we can give kids everything they are looking for.
Thank you.
Other than COVID-related matters, what do you feel is the most important challenge facing the Franklin School Board in the next year and why?
Just like everybody, I think it's money. It's, and when I say that, I don't say it like we're running out of money. What I'm saying is, how do we put it all to use in the best way? And are we putting it to use in the best way? We always debate the idea of teacher salaries. We debate the idea of administration, how many is enough and how many is too much. The same thing with faculty, how many is enough and how many is too much? So it's really looking at how that money gets spent in the best way for all our students. And I think that's going to, it's going to be a problem for a while, but I think in the long run, it is going to balance eventually.
Thank you.
Does any board member have a follow-up question? No follow-up questions? Thank you.
Back out the audience?
Yep. So thank you, everyone, for sticking with us at this point. We're going to take a 10-minute recess, and we will return at 7:42.
Are we really supposed to sign each one of these and turn them in?
All record, yeah.
Sorry.
The longest name.
I know.
What does this really mean? These words?
I just missed it for my own writing pad.
Okay. Yeah, I didn't quite.
I tried.
Yeah, I failed.
Okay. All right. So we're all in the same boat there. We did kind of.
And we are back from recess at 7:42. Like, thank everyone for going through the interview process. At this time, we would have a board discussion. Before we take board action, would any board member like to comment about the candidates? This is where board members can discuss the candidates and talk about the answers that were given tonight and provide insight to the selection of a new board member. I'll start because having been in your shoes in 2017, I appreciate your willingness to seek this position and go through this process. I was impressed with your backgrounds, and the answers are genuine, and any of you could bring a strength to this board. At this point, I'd say I have a couple of favorites, but in the end, it still will be a tough choice. But in the final vote, the six of us have to vote and possibly select a new board member. So the floor is open for any board member to comment or discuss the candidates before us tonight. Don't all jump at once.
I agree. I think they're quality candidates. I'm glad I'm not running against them this time.
Yeah, I thought the, thank you all for coming. I thought the candidates did a fabulous job. I especially liked the community service aspect. I like the, I like the energy of Kelly and Ann and that they have, that they have kids in the district and are very interested in the district going forward, especially for the next 10 years or so. I think, I think either one of them would be a great addition to the board going forward. I really like their energy.
Anyone else?
I agree with what was said, yes. I think Kelly and Ann, for me, are, do stand out as far as energy and kids in the district. As far as between the two of them, it's going to be tough. Although I recognize that Ann has put the time in to be at our meetings. Also, I think she is coming at from a community service perspective. She wants to enter the community. I appreciate Kelly's advocacy and vision-setting skills. So I'd like to hear other board members think also.
Now, we'll echo some of those thoughts. I believe that each candidate would bring something different to the board, both in their work backgrounds, in their educational backgrounds. And it would be interesting, you know, in a different way with each one of them on board. Unfortunately, we can only select one. And I guess we'll be going through that process.
Any further discussion?
I can just only echo what everyone else has said. I really did like the energy that Ann brought to the table. I like that. I've seen Ann at the board meetings. I feel like she's well-informed, and I also made note that I felt like she really did her research as well before coming before us tonight. I do have a concern regarding one of the candidates. I'm afraid that they are not completely centered upon our school district and doing what's best for the kids. I am also concerned about time constraints and the possibility of just leaving one board to jump on another for, I don't know, better opportunity, so to speak. So I do have some concerns in that arena.
Any other discussion? If there's no further discussion, would any board member like to make a motion to remove all four candidates and leave the board seat unfilled? Hearing no motion, we will move to the next step of taking action, which is a board vote.
Your name's on it anymore?
Yes, true.
One vote for Kelly Savage. Two votes for Kelly Savage. One vote for Ann Sapersky. Two votes for Ann Sapersky. Three votes for Ann Sapersky. Three votes for Kelly Savage. Tied three to three between Kelly and Ann.
Considering no candidate under active consideration received a majority of votes cast, would any board member like to make a motion to remove one or more candidates from active consideration?
I move that we vote, I move that we remove the candidates that didn't get any votes from active consideration.
Second that motion.
Motion by Mr. Sprague, second by Mr. Lewis. Any discussion? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. That will bring us to another round of voting.
Is there any discussion?
Yeah.
Further discussion?
Should we have any?
Is there any further discussion before we vote?
One of the, one of the things that I liked about Kelly is her, her advocacy in the past for, for CISA and for legislative actions. And I know we've talked about that as a board for, I can only speak for the last year and a half, but I know that we've talked about that, and I think that, and how we're interested in doing that going forward. And I think she brings a unique, unique ability and set of skills to do that.
I would agree, but also one of our former candidates also mentioned that he was able to connect with our legislators. He knew that there was, he knows politics, and now we've just eliminated him. And he also knew the front line of education.
Sure, but there are, there are now two candidates left.
Right. So I guess my point is the fact that they, that you think that her being, or able to feel that she can connect with legislatures, that was another, that was a benefit of another one of the candidates. So that didn't really make her stand out.
Well, it does now.
I think that's one aspect of what we're looking for.
I agree completely. I agree completely.
I think Ann has a greater depth and of the day-to-day and the cycle of business that comes to the board. She's got, I think, a better awareness of that because she's been to the board meetings. I think that's a broader and it has more weight than just that one advocacy skill.
I would definitely agree with Linda on that. Ann has put in the time. She's been here. I feel a great passion from Ann. I feel a great sense of love for the community in everything that she said. I felt she's done her homework. And I also like that to Larry's answer, she talked about representing her constituents, and she talked about our mission and vision statement, which no other candidate had mentioned. So I really appreciated that. It's, it goes back to me again, or it goes back again to that depth, doing the homework, being here, really being invested in what we're doing here. And I feel like Ann has shown that.
I also thought when we discussed about what, what the future is, I thought Ann had the best response to a vision for the future.
I believe Kelly's background in business would be a good addition to the board, both her government relations, but also in the business arena, the problem-solving and the ability to work with many levels of individuals within an organization because we are functioning as the business arm of the school district.
Any other discussion?
Well, I would say that we are a board, though. We're not in the day-to-day, you know, to your point about her business background and being able to, at different levels, but we're at a higher level.
Right. We're policy setting, and that's what business is all about.
I think that Ann had more, you know, she recognizes that we are, our role is to monitor and follow through and, and set those expectations. And she has, she knows, again, she knows her business. She knows our cycle of, of work. I think that Kelly would be learning that, and I think Ann would be, could hit the ground running on in participating and adding to our work. That's why I think Ann's the stronger candidate.
I, I think there's a learning curve. I think there's a learning curve both ways. I also think that there's, they've both, they've both served on boards in the past. And I think, I think board services, I think board service in the past is important, and I think they both have that. You know, I liked, I liked the service that both of them, that both of them had. I like Kelly's more.
Now, this seat is for now until April, correct?
Correct.
This, this seat is up for election in April.
Yes. Whoever wins this appointment tonight would have to run again in April or declare their candidacy for, if there's more people, the primary in February and the spring election in April.
I thought when we talked about this the other day, and I mentioned how we might move from two candidates to three or two to four depending on the year, that was brought up because the person who took the seat was going to have it for three years.
No.
No?
No.
I'm confused.
This is Janet's seat, and Janet is up, would be up for election.
Correct.
In April. Her term expires in April.
And even when I was brought on the board in 2017, the person I replaced still had one additional year on their term, and I still had to face the electorate in April.
You replaced Minashka. And at that time, it was Debbie, myself, and Minashka ran at the same year, and we don't run, we didn't run at the same time again because you came on the board for a three-year period.
I didn't. I had to run the following April. I was on the ballot.
You ran the following April, but you didn't run when Debbie and I ran.
He ran a year and a half later. He ran in 18.
Right.
And that was 2017 in January.
But the person he replaced ran with Debbie and I in the same year.
I don't know that, but I, I know that in 2017. I can tell you in 2017, in January, Larry was appointed.
Right.
And his seat, Larry's seat is up in April.
Yep.
So that's 2021, so it must have been 2018 that he ran last.
Correct. It is.
You went through the process, so I'm sure you're right.
Yeah. Is there any other discussion before we vote? And hearing none, we shall vote. And hearing none, we shall vote.
One vote for Kelly Savage. One vote for Ann Sapersky. One vote for Ann Sapersky. One vote for Ann Sapersky. One vote for Kelly Savage. One vote for Ann Sapersky. Ann has four, Kelly has two.
With a clear majority, we have a new board member. I'd like to thank everyone for going through this process. And I would like to ask, Ann, can you be at the October 14th school board meeting?
Yeah, I am available to do that.
Okay. There is some paperwork you need to sign that you could stop by the ECC to do and we will have a ceremonial swearing-in at the next school board meeting.
Congratulations.
Yeah.
So, item nine, at this time, I would be looking for a motion to adjourn.
So, move.
Second.
So, move by Mr. Sprague, second by Mr. Alexandrowicz. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? No opposed. Motion passes. We are adjourned at 8:01.